Okay, welcome everyone. My name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund, which is part of Harlem River Preservation. We're really excited that you're here. This is our, wow, it's our third town hall meeting with Harlem River. And the first two have been, were, I think, hopefully fun for you as well as informative. We're really glad that you could join us today and hopefully this one is also fun and also informative. I just want to give a quick explanation of how to think about the format of the meeting. So first of all, we mailed copies of the the presentation slides that you're looking at to all of the households in the development. So if you're list, if you're just listening to the audio over your phone rather than watching this video, you can follow along using the paper copies. Also, please know that we publish all recording, oh, excuse me, all recordings of our town hall meeting on our website. The website is www.harlemriver.org and we do it by the end of the week. In this case, it will likely be by the end of next week, hopefully a bit sooner. But for now, the two recordings, our previous two town hall meetings are already on the website. So again, that's www.harlemriver.org and you can watch the recordings of the last two town halls and the recording of this one will be posted at the end of next week. Just another quick notes on format. Everyone is muted during the presentation so that we can go through all of the slides. And then we have a question and answer session at the end of the meeting. There are a number of ways to ask a question during the session. The first is, you can type your question in the Zoom chat at any time. So that's actually a way to ask your question at any time. We'll either type a response to you during the meeting or we'll answer the question out loud during the question and answer session at the end. So once again, if you have a question, please feel free to type it into the Zoom chat. We'll either type a response, one of our team will type a response, or we'll answer the question out loud during the end of the session. When the Q and A session happens, and I'll go over this at the very end of this meeting, just so everyone is aware. In order to ask a question out loud, all you need to do is raise your hand in Zoom and our question and answer host will call on you. They'll then ask you to unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. If you're using a smartphone to raise your hand, you just tap your screen, a toolbar will appear and tap Participants and Raise Hand. If you have a computer that you're using to listen to this meeting, you move your mouse. It reveals a toolbar at the top. Click Participants, and actually it's at the bottom, I'm sorry. Click Participants and click Raise Hand. And if you're just calling into this meeting using a telephone and you'd like to raise your hand, just dial star nine and we'll see that you're raising your hand. I will go over those details again at the end of the meeting, so please don't worry if you don't remember them. Okay, just a quick note on our agenda for today. So first, we will be very quickly recapping some of the big topics we talked about last meeting. Then we'll go through some questions that we'll answer today. So just overviewing the the big things that you're going to hear today. We're then going to talk about upgrades that are coming to Harlem River. We went over some of these last meeting and we're going to talk about some new ones today. We're going to talk about our resident survey that some of you have actually already started to fill out and submit. We're then going to talk about lease signings. And one thing to note is that we have several representatives from NITIA on the meeting, including Robert Tesorero, who is the head of leased housing. And they will be able to provide a lot of information and should be able to answer most, if not all, of your questions today. We'll then talk quickly about hiring and look, or excuse me, local, local jobs for residents or jobs on the, on the, on the development project as well as training opportunities. And then finally, what to expect over the next few months as we move towards the beginning of construction. And then finally, as I said, we'll have our, our Q and A session. Okay, so first, we are going to quickly recap last month's meeting. So as I said before, my name is Sam Bernbaum. I am a project manager at Settlement Housing Fund. I'm part of Settlement Housing Fund is part of Harlem River Preservation LLC, which is a nonprofit organization. We are the lead developer selected by NITIA to lead the pact conversion at Harlem River. Starting in the fall, Harlem River Preservation will rehabilitate and also upgrade. All apartments and grounds will also start serving as the property manager. We begin to provide social services. And just so everyone is aware, the development is converting from public housing to project based Section 8. We'll get a lot more into that later in the presentation. And again, there will always be opportunities to ask questions both during the, the, this, this presentation. Please type your questions in the chat and we'll type answers or at the end during the Q and A, please feel free to ask questions about the conversion. One point to really always remember is that even once the, the, even once construction starts after it ends during our management of the developments, NITIA will continue to own the buildings and the land. Apartment inspections are ongoing to evaluate the physical conditions. I think many of you have, many of you have had, had us come in and look at various things around your units. This is to assess the, the physical conditions of the apartments right now. We're also doing a lot of inspections on the grounds, on the mechanical systems, plumbing, a whole host of things to really make sure that we understand what physical, what, what problems exist at the, at the development that we're going to address during construction. Really important point, rent will be capped at 30% of household income. So if you current, the only, the only caveat is if that you currently pay a flat rent, your new rent will be phased in over a five-year period and utilities are included in your rent. So again, you're, you will be paying 30% of your income for your rent. Again, we'll get into that a little bit more later with some additional details and provide more context. Another important point, given the pandemic that we find ourselves in, and hoping everyone is safe and healthy. We really prioritize COVID safety. We have a number of protocols in place for all Harlem River personnel working on site. We have a COVID safety plan that is, copies of which are in the property management office in multiple languages that you're, we encourage you to pick up and read. We dropped, we submitted copies of these to all households many months ago, but if you don't have yours or can't find it, please feel free to go to the property manage office to grab one or you can, you can send us an email at info@harlemriver.org and we'd be happy to, to share another one with you. And then finally, I already said this, but if you'd like to, to listen to a recording or watch a recording of the two previous town hall meetings we've had, you can visit www.harlemriver.org and click the Resident Meetings tab to watch those recordings. And a recording of this presentation will be uploaded next week by the end of the week. So before I get into these questions, I actually want to just invite a representative from NITIA to provide a little bit of an intro from their end. I'm not sure, Ian, would you like to give a little bit of an introduction or is it someone else?
No, this is perfect. Thanks, Sam. So thanks so much, Sam. Hi, everyone. My name is Ian Lundee and I'm a director with the real estate team here at NITIA. We just wanted to start this meeting out by thanking all of you for making the time to be here tonight. We really appreciate your, kind of how hard it is to carve this time out in your schedules and we really appreciate you prioritizing this because it is just so, so important for us to get your feedback and to be able to communicate what this means for you and make sure that any questions you have are answered directly. So, so first, I want to just thank all of you for being on the line this evening. And for those of you who maybe weren't able to join one of the previous meetings with NITIA, NITIA does really just want to share how we got to this point a little bit. And just so you understand the context behind who this team is and, and how NITIA created a partnership with them. So to step all the way back, this is part of a pact conversion. So act stands for the permanent affordability commitment together. And pact is a strategy that NITIA came up with in partnership with the federal government because historically, we have not received adequate funding to not just invest in, but really to maintain Harlem River houses. And so as a, a public housing authority with kind of a full partnership with the federal government, we rely on them for funding. And when they haven't historically given it to us in the traditional way, and we asked, what can we do? How can we access the resources that we think and we know we need to properly invest in and properly repair Harlem River houses? And the solution that the federal government has for this is through conversions over to Section 8. So a conversion to Section 8 allows the housing authority to partner with another entity who has more flexibility, more capacity and more experience to convert over to the Section 8 program, still remains a publicly funded program. And we then work with that partner to bring a, an incredible amount of additional resources to invest in your homes, to really conduct repairs, to serve as the new onsite property manager and to provide enhanced social services and community programs. So the way that we do this is we have a competitive process. And so this team was selected from a slate of other teams interested in providing these services. And we selected them because we really think that they have the expertise, capacity and the, the long-term dedication to this work and to acting as the best possible property manager at Harlem River houses. So just a reminder that this is a holistic program. So as part of pact, we are looking at the full development. We are looking at the sites and the grounds, the buildings, improvements to the underlying systems, to the roofs, to the apartments themselves, everything down to the actual fixtures in your kitchens. Just to make sure that we are, we're really thinking about the whole problem. And you've probably experienced NITIA in the past coming in and just fixing one thing and not addressing another. So this is really a strategy that allows us to work with a new team with a lot of expertise that helps us finally invest in Harlem River houses to the extent that, that you all really deserve. So you know, Sam mentioned some of these, but I do just want to reiterate from NITIA that there are really important protections that are built in both to our agreements with this team. We still own the land, so this is a ground lease. So it's built into the lease that we have with this team as well as required by the actual federal funding. So this is still a federal funded program, federally funded program. So your resident, so your rent will not be more than 30% of the household income. You will maintain the right to organize. Resident associations are still going to receive funding. You'll have the right to renew your lease of applicants upon conversion. You'll be able to add relatives to your lease. You'll continue to have succession rights.
Ian, I'm sorry to interrupt. You actually cut out, I don't know if you cut out for everyone, but you cut out for me just for a quick second. Right after you said right to organize. So I just, I didn't know if you wanted to just go back for a quick second.
Yeah, of course. Thanks, Sam. So just going through the important protections and sorry I cut out there for a second. So really key is, is just to remind everyone that, you know, you remain resident subsidized by the federal government. NITIA remains the administrator of those, those subsidies. So as part of that, you know, rents are not going to be more than 30% of your household income. You will continue to have the right to organize. Resident associations are going to continue to both be acknowledged and they're going to receive funding. You'll have the right to renew your lease. You will not be re-screened upon conversion. You'll have the ability to add relatives to your lease. You will continue to have succession rights. You will be able to have grievance hearings and you can continue to receive the, if you are a recipient of the earned income disregard, you will continue in that program exactly as it works in Section 9. And this is also a massive investment in your campus, which means it's going to create a lot of jobs. And those are jobs that we're working really closely with the Harlem River Preservation Team to make sure you have access to. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to this team and I want to thank you all again for, for being here tonight because we are, we're excited about starting to and continuing to collaborate with you and, and present what the options look like as part of this program. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Ian. So just quickly want to go through at a high level, some of the questions that we'll be addressing today. So first of all, we're going to talk about some of the landscape repairs and upgrades that will occur at Harlem River. And by landscape, I mean the areas that you see right when you walk out of the buildings, the grounds and the, the sidewalk and the pavement, the variety of different things. And we'll get into that in a second. We'll also talk about what some other areas will look like after work is completed. We'll talk a bit about why tenants need to sign new leases and also how this process will work. We'll talk about how tenants can apply for jobs at the work site. And then finally, what residents should expect in the next few months in their day-to-day lives and how you might interact with our staff. So now I'm going to turn it over to a representative from our general contractor, L and M Builders Group, Ellie Himmelstein. Ellie?
Hi, Sam. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thanks. I'm gonna jump right in here. There are a lot of NITIA properties out there, but Harlem River is unique. There is nothing else like this out there. It is, it's nine acres, which to put that, put that in context, that's seven football fields. If you walk from, what is it? If you walk from McCoon's to Adam Clayton Powell, that's a quarter of a mile if you walk down the ceremonial stairs. So the site is just tremendous and only a court of it, a quarter of, ah, excuse me, only a, a quarter of it, 25% are the actual buildings. So the landscaping, the site itself has so much potential. So what we need you to do is use your imagination. We're, we've already worked with, you know, the design team, ownership has hired an incredible design team who is starting to lay things out. But we need you to use your imagination a little bit and imagine the site without any asphalt, without any broken up concrete or raised pavers. And now you have clear paths after we complete our site work. You have beautiful planting around the buildings. You have perennials, annual flowers. Just a tremendous amount of, of site work and potential that, that will be completed once we're, once we're done. The team has outlined some of that work here. You have the sculptures from the, the incredible John Henry with his, with his hammer, the sculpture off of 151st Street, the, the, there are a couple of others as well. Those are all going to be restored. We have maybe most importantly, aside from just the aesthetics are the lighting and security. So we've gotten a lot of feedback from tenants on that. And we've already had a design team come in. They do something called a photometric study, which basically they go and they see what does this property need in order to be well lit, not like Yankee Stadium across the river, but lit up enough that when you come home at night and you're walking to the entrance of your building, everything is safe and the paths are, the paths are clear. In addition to all the lighting that we're gonna add, you know, modern LED lighting, we're also going to have cameras, CCTV, which is going to monitor all these paths as well as inside the building. And that will be, you know, integrated into the overall security system that the site is going to, is going to have. There is also fencing, which is in, you know, various states of disrepair. That's going to be replaced so that it's all the same type and which will add to, you know, the safety and the overall appeal of the property. So just the, the potential here is tremendous. It is probably the most unique project that we're going to be, have worked on and will be working on. And we're very excited to, to get started on it. We can go to the, the next slide. And that is discussing the stairwells. This is also at, at Harlem River 1, the low-rise buildings. And you have a, you have a couple of things going on here. The first thing, you know, we've walked the property a lot at this point. And the stairwells are, are dark, even though you have those, those great windows which you see in the photo on the right, as it's, as it's noted, there isn't enough lighting. And part of that is the older lights and part of it is just the, the floors are dark, the ceiling is, is a darker, dirty color. The tiles haven't been maintained and cleaned in, in quite some time. So and then another quick thing, just in terms of everyday use of the building. And you can see that the apartment entry doors are in various states of disrepair. Some of the locks aren't working. The doors are, are, are askew or out of plum and the, the trash chutes, many of which are currently locked, are, are just tiny. They are, I, I can't think of a better word to describe them other than they are, they are tiny. They cannot fit. I, I don't know if garbage these days has gotten bigger than it used to be, but you know, I, I see what I throw away every morning after, after breakfast. And these chute doors are certainly not big enough to accommodate that. So if you can, please go to the next slide. This is what we're, this is what the design team is proposing. So just to follow up on the last thing we were talking about, you see that nice large stainless steel trash chute door. So basically what's happening there is we're removing the existing small door and going back with a larger door. We've done this successfully at other NITIA jobs to the point where the other developers working are basically adopting, adapting this as, as a standard. It creates a, it basically introduces a usable trash chute now. You have garbage, you walk out of your apartment instead of having to potentially leave it in the hallway or walk it down the stairs. You open up the trash chute and it goes right down to, first of all, it will fit. And then it'll go right down to the new trash compactors, which we'll be installing as well. I believe there roughly 45 entrances or so, so 45 new compactors and hundreds of new trash chute doors. You can't, oh no, you can see it in the photo, the new, the new apartment entry door, new hardware. Everything will be secure. There'll be door sweeps that eliminate some of the sound that's coming in from the hallways or the drafts, working peep and chimes. New LED lighting. You can say, see, it's so simple just by putting on, you know, a lighter color of paint on the ceiling and introducing energy efficient and bright new LED lighting, the hallways brighten up and take advantage of all that daylight that's coming in from the windows. The new windows, which we have more photos on coming up, also will increase the amount of daylight coming in. And then just some quick general notes, the stairs are in various, also there's some, some damage there. So we have repairs that will take place to repair any of the, the broken steps and risers. And then the, the tile itself, the glazed block is going to be cleaned. We're going to replace the grout and a new a, a new, excuse me, paint will go on the, on the floor. Can go to the, the next slide, please. All right. So we, I just briefly mentioned this, the, the windows. So right now, on the left side, everyone recognizes the, the windows. So two exciting things are happening here. One, in general, the slider that the property has right now is really energy inefficient. So it lets in a lot of cold air during the, during the winter, lets out the cool air during the summer. And the, the configuration, excuse me, the configuration of introducing the AC into that panel, it's difficult to install, difficult to remove. And basically tenants, this photo was taken during, I believe it was taken during the fall, but even if you walk the property now or over the last couple of months, you'll see that the ACs are still in the, in the windows. And that just leads to the apartments from going through this, this phase of either being too cold or too hot. You have drafts, you have overheating, so you have to run the AC. So it has to stay during the winter. It's just a challenging condition. And you also have those, those window bars which are integrated into the design, which are not that, uh, not that architecturally pleasing. So what's, what's being proposed on the right is actually going back to the historical window, back to when the property was first built. It's called a casement window. And it lets in, it does everything that a good window or a great window is supposed to do. It's energy efficient, which means that you're not going to get the draft or the transferring of hot and cold from the outside into your units. Your units will be more comfortable. You have more sound attenuation. You're not going to hear as much from the outside just by merit of it being a, in addition to a thermally broken window, just a, an upgraded, an upgraded product. I, I think I mentioned that you have increased, increased daylight and what's not shown here also is that it will be a lighter color on the, on the inside, which also brightens up the, the overall apartment. So this is, this is something that we're, we're very excited about. I was going to say probably, but it's not probably. It is the, the most premium and nicest window I've ever installed in my, I don't know, 18 years of construction and probably the nicest window that we'll be installing in the, in the upcoming years on all of our projects, whether it's new construction or, or preservation. I think is, is there an additional slide or, oh, then, um, so we actually, with, with Jerome, who's also on the call, we brought, uh, we brought the, the mock-up of the window that the manufacturer produced for, for Harlem River Houses. We brought it outside just to, to give it, let you see what it would look like against the, the existing window. And that's, that's about it. Hopefully I, I am around if anyone has any questions in the chat or afterwards and I can't, cannot say enough how excited we are to, to get the work, work started in the, hopefully, I guess, early fall. Thank you.
Whoops, I was muted. Thank you so much, Ellie. Really appreciate it. And as Ellie said, he will continue to be in this presentation and will also be available for questions during the Q and A. I also want to just emphasize quickly that the landscape improvements that we outlined or that Ellie outlined a few slides ago are by no means the only things we're doing. We're hard at work planning a variety of other things and we'll continue to display our plans and, and, you know, hope we get your feedback on these, on these, during these, these meetings over the coming weeks and months. So a lot more to come, but we are really excited to give you, you know, as we can, as we complete these funds, a little bit more information each time. So now I'm going to turn it over to our partners at Presbyterian Senior Services to talk a bit about the resident survey. Anya Arremus, do you want to take it away?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Anya Rostman from PSS or Presbyterian Senior Services. So we are the social service partner and we are really excited to, to work with everyone very soon. In the meantime, you should all have hopefully seen your, a survey that was dropped off at the doors. There's also flyers out. So there's a few ways to complete the survey and, and basically this is a survey about what types of services you guys want when we are able to start onsite. And so it's, it's really important that we, we hear from as many people as possible so that we can, we can start planning and really do the best, the best job we, we can when we, when we get started. So there's a few ways, as I mentioned, you can use the QR code. So that's the black and white little square on the top right. You can open your smartphone, if you have one, and use the camera and that'll take you to the survey online. And that's also on the flyers that are, are posted around. You can also go to the website, harlemriver.org and find the survey there. If, if you're not, you know, tech savvy, that's no problem. You can also give a call to the number two, the number here, which we can, which is also on the flyer and leave a message and we will call you back. Somebody will assist you to complete it. And also, as I mentioned, you, everybody should have received a survey at their door. So, and if you are able to complete it that way, you can just drop it off. There's a little picture of the mailbox, which is, I guess, the, I think it's the old library. It's the management office now, where you can leave it when you're completed. It is anonymous. You do not have to give us your name and information. But if you are able to do that, we are going to enter everybody into a raffle to win a $50 Amazon gift card and there will be three winners for that. So the only way we can get those out to everybody is if we do know who you are. So totally up to everybody to, if you want to give us your information, but without that, we can't be entered into the raffle. And just to mention, the survey is available in English, of course, Spanish. Those are available online, both in English and Spanish. But if you need any other language, those are available. We have translated copies. I think in the management office as well. So where people, where you can pick them up or when we give a call back, we can also use a translator if that's easier as well. So however is best for you, we, we just want to make it easy and encourage everybody to complete it. It's, it's not too long. And so, but it will really provide us with a lot of help to figure out what, what is needed at Harlem River.
Great. Thank you so much, Anya. And just to let everyone know, we have invited Presbyterian Senior Services, Anya, being a representative to provide a lot more information in, to residents about their plans and about what they'll be doing onsite in previous meetings, previous town hall meetings. And if you're interested in learning more about it, please feel free to go to our website, harlemriver.org and watch the recorded meetings to learn a lot more about PSS. And again, of course, if you have questions that you'd like to have answered today, you can feel free to type your question in the chat as well as raise your hand at the end during our Q and A and we'll, we'll do our best to answer your question. So now I am going to turn it over to, I believe, Lori Broderick with our partners at L and M. Lori, is that right? And do you want to take it away?
Sure. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Lori Broderick with CNC and L and M. As we've previously discussed, as part of the pact program, a new pact lease between the residents at Harlem River and Harlem River Preservation will replace your public housing lease. This new lease will provide residents with rights and protections as to Harlem River resident. This pact lease was developed by NITIA and has been informed by the residents and advocates and stakeholders. It's also been reviewed by the Legal Aid Society. This lease cannot be changed without NITIA's approval. Your pact lease is part of the conversion to the project based Section 8 voucher. We will be sending out a sample lease to all residents. We will be sending out a sample lease to all residents by mail before we actually commence the lease signing, so residents will have a chance to review. You will not sign that lease, but it will give residents a chance to review before we reach out to households to do the lease signings. NICA Section 8 program will perform annual interim income reviews and rent determinations as they were doing while under public housing. Next slide, please. So briefly, I'm going to discuss how the leasing process will work at Harlem River. NICA will use the last income review to determine each household's rent share for the new lease. Eight to twelve months later, NICA will be reaching out to the households, NICA Section 8 program, excuse me, will be reaching out to residents of their due date of their Section 8 annual recertification. The recertifications are completed online through NICA's tenant self-service portal. One year after the conversion, you will be eligible to request a portable tenant-based voucher that you can use to move outside of the development if you choose to. Just like under Section 9, you will only be required to rightsize if an appropriately sized apartment becomes available within Harlem River, you will not be required to rightsize outside of your development. The Legal Aid Society has dedicated, has a dedicated hotline for public housing residents converting to this program project-based Section 8 through the NICA PAC program. Residents can contact the Legal Aid Society for free legal services. The number is two one two, two nine eight, three four five zero. Harlem River Preservation will be contacting households by notice, mail and phone to schedule the lease signings within the next few weeks in April. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lori, really appreciate it, and again, Lori will continue to be on this call, I believe, and if you have questions about leasing, please feel free to put them in the chat, as well as ask at the end during the Q and A. I'm now going to turn it over to Judy Gerena to give a bit more information about, about local hiring, jobs for residents, I know for those of you that joined this meeting last, last month, or maybe it was a month before that, the second town hall, we provided some of this information, so this is a little bit of a repeat. But I, I think we may be able to provide a little bit more than last time, and then, of course, please continue to tune into our town hall meetings as we get closer to starting construction, there will be a lot more information coming out about this, so Judy, please, please, please feel free to take it away.
Thanks, Sam. So, good evening, everyone, thank you so much for joining us, we are very excited to be able to provide construction employment opportunities on this project. These will be per hourly wage, full-time entry-level positions, and you will need little to no experience in order to apply. These positions will be available once construction begins, which we're expecting around the fall time. In order to qualify for these positions, you will need to be an authorized NICA resident, which means you need to be listed on the lease. You will need a OSHA 40 certification, and if you don't have one, we will be providing training later this summer. You will also need work authorization, a valid ID, and an updated resume. On this project, we've partnered with Local 79, a labor union, to provide tenants with construction training, and as I mentioned before, we will be offering free OSHA training courses to kickstart your career in the construction industry. We've also partnered with various community organizations to ensure that candidates are provided with support and access to free training in soft skills as well as the construction industry skills. And this will ensure that once you meet with potential employers, you make a good impression. If you're interested in applying for any of these positions, I know it's a little bit early, but if you want to show your interest or perhaps provide a resume, you can drop it off at our Dropbox, it's located at 210 L West 153rd Street. And we've also provided a picture of the slide, so that you know exactly what it looks like. If you would like to email it, you can also email it at info@harlemriver.org. And please ensure that your resume is up to date and includes your contact information so we can reach out to you. If you need assistance updating your resume or creating a resume, you can reach out to Reese. They offer an array of services to get you ready to apply for these positions. Thanks so much, back to Sam.
Thanks Judy. Okay, so next we are going to pass it over to Saidah, who is with West Harlem Group Assistance. Saidah, please feel free to take it away.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Saidah Walls and I am representing West Harlem Group Assistance co-developers for this project, and so here we're going to just go over what should residents expect in the next few months, right, and so we will be continuing inspections, apartment inspections, and as well as preparing to begin limited repairs in some of those apartments, right, so notices will be delivered and posted with the repair schedule, and you know, someone will be in touch with you to schedule a convenient time, something that works for you and your family's schedule. You may see work happening, right, in the apartments, common areas, or mechanical areas. The new, the lease signing process will begin in a few weeks, beginning in April, and as Lori mentioned earlier, there is a phone number where you can contact the Legal Aid Society for free legal services at two one two, two nine eight, three four five zero, and they will be able to help you review your new lease, sample leases will be mailed to everyone, right, and so please also complete your survey and, you know, and enter for the, the raffle, for the Amazon gift cards. Your input is crucial, it's key, you know, we would like to know what services you would like to see offered for yourselves and your, your family. We will continue to have these town hall meetings every four to six weeks, right, and we expect for construction to begin late summer, early fall.
Thanks so much, Saidah. Actually, I think there's one more slide.
Yes. Continuing, well, the winter is over, now officially a happy spring. But inspections will continue, the resident survey is happening until April twenty-third, that is the, the last date for submitting that. And we will continue to have resident town halls, meetings throughout the spring and the summer. And then the hiring and training will begin in the summer. That's it, Sam.
So, I don't know, actually, Saidah, who?
That's gonna be me coming in.
Hey Jerome.
Hey, hi, hello everyone, my name is Jerome Dunbar and I'm the Senior Community Affairs Manager at L and M, and I firstly have to tell you, I am so excited to be here, what an honor it is to be here. Some of you may have seen me whether in the community room or walking throughout Harlem River. And folks have questions, and how can residents ask questions and get more information is the biggest reason why we're here this evening. Firstly, NICA. NICA has a PAC hotline, which is two one two, three zero six, four zero three six. NICA also has an email and a website, which we will share and continue sharing through numerous door drops and postings. You can email, call, or visit the website for questions for NICA regarding the permanent affordability commitment together, the PAC program, project-based Section 8, how rent will be calculated, or resident rights and protections. You also have our Harlem River Preservation Team here to assist the transition. We also have a hotline, which is two one two, eight six two, one three nine nine, extension two seven one nine. We have an email and a website address, which we will also continue to share through numerous door drops and, and postings. You can email, call, or visit the Harlem Preservat, the Harlem River Preservation website for questions regarding presentation materials, design and construction information, new property management, future meetings and dates and topics, and job opportunities for residents. Lastly, knowledge is power. Tell a friend of a friend of a friend that they have, that they can get real answers by contacting NICA or the Harlem River Preservation Team. Thank you, Sam.
Thanks so much, Jerome. Okay, so we're gonna go into our question and answer. This, I just want to give a quick explanation of how this will work. First of all, Ayana Oliver Taylor at L and M will be moderating, but just to re-review how to actually ask a question, I know many of you have been asking questions in the, the Zoom chat, but if you'd like to ask your question out loud, you can raise your hand, and then Ayana will call on you, will ask you to unmute your microphone so you can ask your question. And to, in order to raise your hand, you, if you're using a smartphone, you can tap the screen, there will be a little toolbar that appears, tap Participants, and then tap Raise Hand. If you're using a computer, just move your mouse slightly, and a toolbar will appear, click Participants, and then click Raise Hand, and if you're just calling into the meeting using a telephone, all you need to do is dial star nine to raise your hand, we will see it on Zoom and we will call on you, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ayana.
Hey, thanks so much, Sam. It looks like we got a question from Eileen Serta related to apartment size, I don't know if Lori or Robert want to take this, but the question that was asked is, what is the correct apartment size for two people? For example, a mother and a daughter older than ten years.
Hi, Robert, can you take that question?
Sure, so, actually, that's a great question, so one thing I do want to emphasize here is that at the conversion, we are using public housing standards, so if you are approved for a two-bedroom, a mother-daughter or a father-son, that's fine, we'll honor that. However, anyone new coming into the apartments from our waiting list will follow the Section 8 occupancy standards. And in Section 8, that would be a one-bedroom for us, but again, if you already have a two-bedroom and you approve for that, mother-daughter, you can stay in that apartment.
Thank you so much, Robert, I'd like to go to some of the hands that are raised, and then we can come back to some of the written questions. Two one two, or the last, last four digits, three six four nine, can you please unmute?
We should be able to.
Hi, hello? Three, four, nine?
Yeah, there, it's not on mute anymore, we should be able to hear.
Melanie, do you want to unmute and you can ask your question?
Yes, actually, I'm glad you called on me because it was a question I have directly about the mother-daughter situation in terms of rooms and how that's gonna go at this point. I have an emergency situation personally right now where my oldest stepdaughter may need to move in with me, and obviously with myself and my daughter, my seven-year-old, I would probably need another room. So if, if something like that is going on during this transition, is that going to be a problem for me to request a second bedroom?
So, again, anything prior to conversion, please discuss with your property manager, because again, they'll be the ones who will be coordinating that, but if I heard you correctly, you'll have three people. And again, three people requires a two-bedroom in our Section 8 program. But if public housing approves you for an extra bedroom as a reasonable accommodation, Section 8 will own that as well.
Thanks so much, Robert, Melanie, I don't know if that answers the full extent of your question. Do you want to unmute? Okay, we can go on to the next raised hand, three, one, four, nine, do, can you please unmute?
Okay, that's me, hello?
Hi, how are you, ma'am?
Okay, you say that NICA is gonna be Section 8 for a project base, correct?
That's correct.
Hello? Okay, so my thing is, why is it that we're not able to move in different boroughs if we want to, like say, if you want to move out of Manhattan to the Bronx or Brooklyn? You know, what if you don't want to stay in Manhattan, can you still use the Section 8?
So hi, this is Robert from Section 8, and that's a great question, so as explained before, once we convert Harlem River 1 and 2, after one year from conversion, you can, if you choose to, request a tenant-based voucher, which will give you an opportunity to take your Section 8 outside Harlem River.
What is it called, what is it called?
It's called, it's called a, a tenant-based Section 8 voucher, or Choice Mobility, referred to, but that's, that's the beauty of it, right, because you'll have options after one year, or even five years from now, you could always request a transfer. And I just want to say that since Section 8 is federally from the program, it's not just here in New York City, you can take your voucher outside of New York. We get a lot of, right now, what we call portability transfers. Right now, NICA pays for approximately two thousand Section 8 tenants that live outside of New York City. So it is a very popular option among our Section 8 tenants.
Okay, the other, the other, the other thing is, you, you mentioned cameras. Now, I think it's a beautiful thing that you are renovating and remodeling the apartments, but then you still got the same as the people that get hard, do drugs, slam doors. What happens, like, what happens, are the cameras gonna monitor these people? Because there's a lot of stuff going on here, you know?
Thanks so much for that question, I'd like to ask my colleague Doreen or Priscilla from CNC to address the long-term security plan that we'll have in place.
Hi, you know, there's, there's, this is Doreen, there's an old saying, and it's not so old, and it keeps coming around, if you see something, say something.
Right, that's John Lewis. That's John Lewis, he says, you have an obligation, you have a duty.
Yes, yes, you do, that, that's the first help that we could use. We really need the residents to tell us what's going on. You live there, we don't, you know a lot more about what's going on than we do, but we are gonna have the cameras, you know, we, we don't want to put our residents in a snitching situation.
Right.
We'll be able to, to watch a great deal more than ever been able to see before, and that will be very helpful when we have to bring residents in, sit them down, try to get them to comply to rules and regulations. It's not an easy lift, the majority of the residents that live in any development are all very, very good residents, there's only a handful of residents that do all of the destruction and make the trouble that you see. So we're here to help you, the cameras will help, information, even anonymously, from residents will also help. But we're gonna be a team on this, and it'll be a lot better with us moving forward, with your help.
Yeah, well, I'm one of the residents that paid my rent on time for over twenty years, didn't miss a beat. And it's very, very frustrating when I have to deal with all the noise and the activity that goes on in the hall, the slamming doors, two, three o'clock in the morning. You know, and, and a lot of times I turn my back, but it's very hard for me.
We can't, it's a miracle, but we are gonna promise that we're gonna work with our resident base to improve the quality of life.
Okay, and what's your name?
My name is Doreen, Doreen Isley.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd also like to mention that we're doing an extensive scope related to security and access control, and there's been some conversation in the chat, so Ellie, do you just want to elaborate on the, the current sort of plan related to security infrastructure?
Sure, I, I mean, first of all, what, what's great about Harlem River is that you, you know your neighbors. Sure. I mean, first of all, what's great about Harlem River is that you know your neighbors. There are only so many apartments in every building. So I think sometimes when the doors aren't secure, people are coming in who don't live there. So all the building entry doors are going to be secured. There's going to be key fob access control. By using a key fob, basically a little piece of plastic that you can attach to your keychain, there's several assigned to every apartment. Someone can't make 20 copies and hand it out to all their friends. So the people who live there are the people who have access to the building and the doors themselves will be secure. They're also, in addition to having the cameras at the exterior of the building, we're going to introduce cameras in the stairwells and also cameras at the roof and at the bulkhead, which will limit activity, you know, people going up to the roofs. All the buildings, or a lot of the buildings are interconnected by these roofs. And people can, you know, hang out by one roof, then go up one way, go down another. That's going to be, that will come to a stop. And then I think the biggest thing, which I've seen, you know, working with CNC and the incredible security team that they have, is that they monitor these cameras and they, it has an impact. It, some behaviors change. And properties, properties change. And the, some of the things which bother tenants right now, just over time, stop happening. By merit of the excellent management team, having cameras, having the security team accessible onsite, these things change. Like Doreen said, it doesn't happen overnight. But this work, you know, puts us on the path to that, to that change.
Thank you so much, Ellie. I'd like to provide some time for the translation lines to ask questions. Are there any questions from the Spanish line?
Just give us one minute. The interpreter's double checking. We didn't have anybody with a hand raised, but she's going to double check now.
Okay, thank you. And also from the Haitian Creole line.
Okay, Spanish, it seems like we have no questions.
No questions from the Spanish line.
And then we had a Mandarin line tonight, I believe, not Haitian Creole. Let me just check with those interpreters.
Excuse me, there's no question from the Mandarin language line. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd like to ask, I'd like to go back to the raised hands. Robert, can you please unmute?
Sure.
Not Robert T., Robert who's raised his hand.
Sorry, but.
Resident. Hi, Robert, I just asked you to unmute.
You should be able to. I'm extending that. Robert, there should be a little, if you can hear me, there should be something that pops up on your screen that says the host is asking you to unmute. Sure, if you can hear me.
Okay, I guess we can go to Kim Letley. Can you please unmute?
Sure. Mine is not, most of my questions were answered, but I just wanted to piggyback off of the security issue because obviously that's one of our main concerns. And I hadn't come home from work a couple of weeks ago, as I'm coming in, just a gang, a gang of all these little misfits, didn't reckon, it had to be like 15 or 20 of them, but they were coming out of the building. And why? Because one of my neighbors called the police and they saw the car and they rolled up. They introduced themselves to me as the new community liaison for us. And so I thought that was great. They were right out of PSP, the Police Service Agency right here on 8th Avenue. So that's one thing to do is to become familiar with who our community liaisons are and be able to talk with them and start a dialogue with them. Because if not for them coming, I probably would have got in a fight because that's how mad I was. I would have took one of the little kids and run their neck because I was just so mad. I'm coming home from work and you're here just destroying, destroying where I live even more. So I just encourage everyone to either call over there or stop by and introduce yourselves to them, take their card, so that when you have different issues, you can actually call them. And they were very nice young officers.
Thank you so much, Kim. I would like to go back to the chat. There are a couple of questions related to the construction schedule and sequencing. Ellie, can you please just walk through the process of in-unit repairs?
Sure, thank you, because I was, I can't keep up on the typing. So I think, and Judy has been commenting in the chat as well that, and correct me if I'm misstating this, but I think that this is not a quick answer. I'll try to do it quickly and then I think that there'll be subsequent calls or however, we're going to communicate the information more clearly and with more time to make sure that we address everyone's concerns. It's obviously the, that's one of the biggest, biggest things, right? If one morning you get a knock on your door and a construction team moves in for several days, everyone wants to understand how that's going to happen. So first of all, I know that, you know, all of this is a lot of information. Before anyone goes into anyone's apartment, there's going to be so much notice, to the point probably where it's just going to, it's just going to get on your nerves. So months before, we will have additional meetings where we walk everyone through what the tenant responsibilities are. So for example, if we're going to be doing work in your kitchen, ripping out the existing cabinets, replacing them, putting in beautiful nuke, stone countertops, stainless steel appliances, new flooring, et cetera, what does the tenant have to do to prepare for that? So it's fairly straightforward. Any food that you have in your cabinets, cans, boxes of cereal, whatever it might be, the management team is going to give you bins and you're going to put that into the bins. If someone needs assistance doing that, we will, we will give you the help to make that happen. And you're going to empty out your kitchen to the best of your abilities of all your personal belongings. And we can explain that in more detail in the upcoming months. And a month before we need to go into your unit, we're going to tell you when, at least a month. Typically, it's more than that. We'll let you know when we're going to need to go in there. We don't just show up on a Monday and say, "Hi, we're here." Everything is scheduled and we do our best to, you know, there's, there are a lot of apartments. There's 693 apartments. So we have to stick to a certain schedule, but we try and give people a lot of, lot of notice so that they can make the arrangements with school, with work, with taking care of, you know, family, whatever, whatever it might be. So the day that we, so that's the, the schedule goes out a month before we give notice. Week before we give notice. Day before, we have the team knocking on doors, just making sure that everyone is ready. Things come up, units can be scheduled and good things happen, bad things happen. We might not be able to go in, the tenant might not be able to give us access for some reason. And then we unfortunately have to reschedule. But provided that everything is, that everyone is ready, we go in there on the day of and the kitchens, and every project is unique. And I think Judy mentioned in the chat that we're still figuring this out, figuring it out in the sense that, you know, what are the unique things to Harlem River that we have to address, which are different than other properties and how that's going to impact how we best execute this? But we'll go in on the, on the day of, and typically, a kitchen can take as many as five days. Same thing for the bathroom. We try and execute the work faster. There have been properties where we do all the kitchens. And then after a couple of months, after people get a bit of a break, we circle back and do the bathrooms. I think the most important thing from our perspective, in addition to obviously executing the work properly and delivering the product that, that settlement houses and the development team is looking for and what NYCHA is looking for and the tenants expect, is to execute the work safely. So what, what assurances do you have that we are going to do this safe, safely? So for starters, all the work that we're doing is filed with the New York City Department of Buildings. We don't just come in off the cuff and do whatever we want. Our plans are developed by licensed architects and engineers. They're reviewed by the New York City Department of Buildings Plan Review. And once approved, they have enforcement teams which go out and make sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to be doing. We have a dust mitigation plan that we have to file. You can't go into an apartment and start wreaking havoc and creating dust all over the place. So we have detailed steps that we take from putting up plastic zipper walls to protecting the floors, making sure that our workers are working in certain areas, that there aren't tenants in those areas. We've had, we've done work where tenants are, you know, in the other room and everything is fine. If we're working in a kitchen, obviously, then no one else is going to be allowed to be in there except for the workers. It's not, it's not a lot of people. We try and be mindful of the fact that, not try. We are always mindful of the fact that we're going into your homes. So you're looking at an average of three workers in an apartment at a time. What else? What are some of the other questions that came up? In addition to, one of the other things that we have in the dust mitigation plan provides ventilation. So this is to protect the tenants and also to protect the workers. They wear masks. They wear dusk masks, which we're all familiar with now with COVID. But we also vent the, vent the work out the, out the window. So we have air scrubbers and that vents outside of a window, which keeps the environment safer for the tenants and safer for the, for the workers. And every, every apartment is unique. Every apartment has a different family, different people living there with different, different conditions. We've done, we've had to figure out accommodating work in units where there have been elderly tenants who are on, who are on oxygen, children who have, who are asthmatic. You know, these are, these are all challenges that fortunately we've, we've dealt with. And it's, I shouldn't say, and when I say "we," I should make it clear that that's with the fantastic team that you have from the management company from CNC. So we kind of work hands-in, hands-in glove in terms of the scheduling and the executing the work smoothly. That's not everything. I feel like I've been talking too much. So I'm going to, I'm going to shut up. And maybe there are additional questions, more specific questions that you have related to that, and I can dive into that, or maybe we can touch upon it in the, in the future.
Thanks so much, Ellie, and I just want to confirm, because there was one question in the chat that for residents who do work during the day, we will absolutely work on a case-by-case basis with everyone to accommodate their work schedules. And, and so please definitely follow up with us and let us know. I'd like to go back to some of the raised hands. I see Cheryl Jones has a question. Cheryl, can you please unmute?
Good evening. First, there are people coming and knocking on my door, telling, you know, wanting to come in, saying that they're from one of the, one of the companies on the panel. They don't have ID, they're not showing. When I asked them to show ID twice, they did not show ID. The last time, they wanted me to fill out some papers to give my information, but they wouldn't give ID. So I'm really uncomfortable with that because I don't know if it's housing, if it's who's coming. I'm getting phone calls. They want to come in right at this moment, like, hello, this is the painters. We want to come in and paint your hallway. So I'm confused with, with, with that. And as well as the grounds and things, nothing is being done. Is it because we have to wait until the, until this process is complete? Because the hallways, nothing is being, being done. So I'm just wondering, are the, are the grounds not going to be clean intentionally? And the last thing, I'm sorry, but the park that they were renovating, no, they haven't been doing any work. And I'm concerned about the, the children that live on these grounds. I know that, you know, you may say, oh, we don't have anything to do with that because that, that's not housing. But it's connected to housing. That's where the children play. It's gated up, so at night is very dangerous. There's no lights. The other day, the gate was open. So what's going on with, with that park as well? You know, as far as our safety coming and going.
That's, those are really great questions. I can briefly state, related to the safety surrounding the nearby park, that, you know, that's great feedback that we will take back to our landscape architect and our security consultants to talk about additional site lighting to improve visibility in the area. And then related to your other questions about the people coming into your unit, Ellie and Doreen can speak to this a little bit more. But anyone from our team will have identification. They will have the Harlem River Preservation Identification with them. So you should, you should not expect that anyone from our team will ask to enter or access your apartment without identification. And then to the third question, I don't know if Ian is still on, but NYCHA Property Management should still be doing work. So I don't know if Ian, you want to address how residents can go about speaking with NYCHA Property Management about additional issues on site?
Yeah, thanks so much, Ayana. So just so everyone's aware, this is, this is Ian again. So NYCHA remains the property manager until we actually switch over to Section 8, which will happen later this year. So NYCHA remains your property manager, except for work that's specific to, you know, getting ready and doing the pre-development for the eventual construction that the Harlem River Preservation Team is going to do. NYCHA is still the landlord, NYCHA is still the manager of the campus. So if you're having near-term issues, you should still go to your normal property management office. And there's also two numbers that you can call that can help us, that can kind of help you get in touch with people if you have questions about PACT. And so those will be NYCHA representatives, or if it's just about NYCHA management in general, there's a customer care line. So I'm going to drop both of those into the chat. And then I'll read them out at the end, just so everyone's clear on those numbers and those who are on the phone can, can see them.
Thanks so much, Ian. I'd like to ask if there are, on the translation lines, if there are any questions. Hi, are there any questions on the Mandarin or Spanish line?
Hello, this is from the Spanish line. We have one question on the Spanish line. We'll be taking the question and we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Hello, there is no question from Mandarin line. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, I have a question from the Spanish line, from Soveda Hernandez. She wants to know if, when the time comes to renew the lease, if she will have to present new information about her income or the information that she provided, NYCHA, when she did the last upgrade of her lease, of renewal of her lease, if that information will be used to renew the new lease now?
Sorry, go ahead, Lori.
Sorry. So what NYCHA is going to be doing, and Robert can definitely, definitely elaborate, but they're using the last income review to do the conversion. And that's going to be used with the lease signing that we're going to be doing next month. And then they will continue to do annual recertifications with NYCHA directly to determine the rent.
That's correct, Lori. Yep. Thank you.
Well, Lori, this is Sam. Just to clarify, that means that the tenant will not have a, the, the income review will not occur again, right when they sign their lease. It will be eight months after closing.
Correct. So NYCHA is going to use the last income review on file now for the lease signings that will occur. And then in 12 months, then they will be doing another annual review moving forward with NYCHA annually.
And just to clarify and emphasize that when we do the closing, right, whatever the tenant portion of the rent is with public housing, when we convert, it'll be the exact same. And like Lori said, when we schedule the Section 8 annual review, which will be about eight months later, at that point, then they'll deal with the Section 8 leased housing department on the recertification.
Thank you, Robert. Can you also just elaborate on the process for residents to add household members to their lease?
Sure. So again, I want to emphasize, if you have that change right now, please visit your property management office and put them on the lease. But anything that happens after conversion, so if you want to add somebody, that'll be through the leased housing department. There are two ways you could do that. And one thing we do at Leased Housing is we utilize the NYCHA cell service portal. So in addition to your recertification, you could request an interim change to add somebody to your house, so which will be reviewed by the Leased Housing Section 8 Department to determine if they're eligible or not. So again, those are the two things, including calling the customer contact center. So I know now you call the customer contact center for repairs. That won't be the case here. You will call the customer contact center for any type of Section 8 related questions or, or activities. So those are your two options.
Thank you, Robert. Does, if you're adding someone to the lease, do they have to be there in person to sign? What if there's an overseas household member?
So at the signing that we're going to be doing, I guess soon, we're requiring that the head of household or the co-head spouse be present with photo ID to sign the lease. You don't need the other members of the household present.
Great. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Actually.
That's actually a great segue for me to plug these numbers. So just so everyone's aware, including the, the customer contact center. So if you, if you have an issue, you can always call the NYCHA Customer Contact Center. And again, this applies through conversion. So until we convert, NYCHA remains the property manager. So the number for the NYCHA Customer Contact Center is 718-707-7771. That's 718-707-7771. And again, both this, this is in the chat as well as the, the next number I'm going to speak to. And then if you have a question that's a little more specific to PACT into this conversion and you're, you're hoping to speak with NYCHA, you can always call the NYCHA PACT hotline. And the number for this is 212-306-4036. That's 212-306-4036. So in case anyone is having trouble getting in touch with NYCHA, or you have questions after this presentation, you can always reach us there.
This is, this is Sam from the development team. I also just want to quickly answer a related question to all of the leasing questions. Someone asked in the chat, I'm trying to find the exact question, but something to the extent of, when does their Section 8 subsidy begin? When do they become a Section 8 resident? Is it when they sign their lease? Is it at a different time? This is a great question, and it's one that many have asked. And just to answer quickly and simply, your, you be, your, your lease, despite when you sign it, you're going to be, we're doing the lease signing starting next month. The lease doesn't actually take effect until we close on the deal, until the project actually converts, converts, which is in the late summer, early fall. So until that point, your current lease with NYCHA will remain in effect. You're still, you're still be on a public housing lease. And then despite the fact that you'll sign your new lease in the next few months, the lease itself won't come into effect. Your new PACT Section 8 lease won't come into effect until, until the conversion actually occurs in the late summer, early fall.
Thank you. And I just want to clarify that residents will still only pay 30% of their income. Correct?
Thank you.
And it looks like there's another Section 8 question that just came up. iPhone asked, is there an income cap for Section 8? And if the income bracket, or if the resident exceeds the income limit, will tenants have to move out?
Yeah, I can take that. This is Robert again from NYCHA Section 8. That's a great question. So what's great about this conversion is there is no eligibility review. There is no application yet filled out. You're automatically grandfathered into the Section 8 program. And again, whatever your 30% rent share is, that'll be your portion of the rent to, to the landlord or to the developer. Okay. So again, there is no type of eligibility. So whether your income is a hundred thousand or 25,000, okay, you are going to be a, a Section 8 tenant upon conversion. So please keep that in mind. I also want to point out that the Section 8 waiting list has been closed since 2009. So right now we have about, I would say, 40,000 still on that list waiting to get Section 8. And unfortunately, we can't get to them because there's not enough vouchers. But however, under the PAC deal, you are going to be grandfathered into the Section 8 program. So there's no waiting list, no eligibility. So don't worry about the income cap. That is for the regular Section 8 program.
Thank you, Robert. I, I'd like to go now to some of the hands that are raised. A phone number ending in 7924. Can you please unmute? Hi, I think you just remuted yourself. There you go.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello?
Yes. Hi, how are you?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. My name is Stephanie Douglas. I grew up here when there was no highway. And, uh, because my aunt lived here. And it was very nice. And, uh, you know, the cobblestones and there was no park with the tennis court. There was a park there, but they had like a sand thing for the kids to play in. But we would like climb that wall in the back where they're, um, like on 153rd Street. Those stairs you go down, there's a wall there. And we would play tag because there were no computers, uh, you know, and stuff like that. And we would walk that wall. And we, it was like, uh, just reminiscing. Okay. But, um, seriously, I am 70 years old. I'm an artist. And, um, there are tenants in the building I live in at 2641 Seventh Avenue in 4A, right above me. And there were tenants, I don't know their name. No one wants to tell me. And, um, there were tenants called the Thomases. They lived in 1B in the same building, 2641 Seventh Avenue. I'm in 3A. And these people have robbed me many, many times. And they, if I go down to get the mail, they rob me and stolen the art. The teenagers tell me they're going to kick my F and ass if I don't give them money and the art. And the Thomases are with their coaching them what to say. And, um, the police do absolutely nothing. I was going to have a show and they have robbed me of those works. And, um, they stalk my family. And, um, they are telling people that they are artists and that I'm like some dumb person. I have a degree. I worked in museums. And I had, had shows in galleries. And, um, these people are telling me I cannot do art. I cannot go and have a show because people are supposed to think that they are younger than me, that they're more intelligent. And this is every day. These people make me uncomfortable in my apartment so that I can leave, because they say they need to sell my furniture. And I don't need to be here. I should be out on the street homeless. Do you understand? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
All right. These are not, these are psychopaths. These are not nice people. They try to appear like they're nice sociopaths. You know, kind of dress and trying to act nice. They are not nice people. It's the whole family, Nellie Thomas, Lisa Thomas.
May I just?
Her daughter.
Just for, just for a moment, if, if we can talk to you offline, we'd love to be able to follow up with you. I'm not sure that we should continue.
What would you do? What would you do, miss? I'm 70 years old this month. Do you understand? I've gone to school. I've gone to high school. All my jobs were art-related. All my schools were art. And these people are telling me that I have to give them my life's work. 55 years. They're, they're crackheads, cokeheads. And if you talk to me offline quietly, I cannot get a lawyer. They are monitoring my phones where I cannot email or Gmail or talk to someone about having an art show or retrospective. They will call a person up and tell them that she's crazy. And that we, miss, I don't think anything's going to come of talking it offline. You have to know who's living here. And, um, they're trying to act like they're more intelligent than I am and trying to dominate me. I worked in the Department of Psychiatry doing clinical charting and art therapy. I am not a stupid person, but I am being battered. They're using chemicals to make me uncomfortable and cause health problems. They're telling people I'm the crackhead and that I still work from white people.
Excuse me, ma'am. Hi, my name is Jean. I'm the Director of Social Services. I think that it's a very serious issue that you're discussing.
Yes, it is.
And definitely we want to talk about it, but this isn't the forum.
Social services does not, does not deal with the problem. The police are supposed to.
Ma'am, I'm with the company.
Are supposed to deal with the problem.
Right.
And they tell the, but these people tell the police that she's too old to do art.
No, no, this is, ma'am, what I'm saying is I'm with the company. We're not arguing that. I'm with the company and.
You just, Jean, you just muted. But I think to Jean's point.
I can come over and I can visit you if you wish, and we can discuss further what the issues are so that we can get into more detail. Okay? So I'm going to, so we're going to get your information and I will come and see you. And my name is Jean. Okay. And I'm, and I work with the management company.
Thank you. Thank you, Jean. So let's go to some other questions. I know that Candy Vargas has had her hand raised for a while. Candy, would you please unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi.
I mean, I'm sorry. I have a couple of questions. Not sure if you guys cover them, if I missed any steps of the whole thing. So the first thing is, I do live on the first floor and I have popcorn ceiling, ceiling in the bathroom. And I'm constantly getting leaks and stains on the panels. So I was wondering, is there, is that part of the project to remove the panels and probably make it concrete or whatever other options we have? Also, I know I heard about replacing the windows in the living room. I didn't hear nothing about the windows in the bathroom and in the kitchen. Additionally, I did hear that you guys talked about the flooring. So in my situation, again, I live on the first floor. My whole floor from the bathroom to the kitchen is damaged because there's leaks that we all know about in these buildings. And it's so bad to the point that when my children and I step on the floor, like stinky yellow water rises from underneath. So in my case, I think it's going to be like a severe construction prob, um, construction project, I guess, to, you know, take down the floor and probably dig deep and see what's the problem. So I was wondering as far as that, like, are we going to like be permanently move out until that's resolved? Or for a tempo, I do prefer to go ahead with the Section 8 before the whole project of renovating the apartment takes place. Would I be given the option to move out prior to the renovation? Or is it something that I have to go through the renovation and then move out?
So that's a two-part question, and I'd like Robert to answer the question related to Section 8. And then we can speak more specifically to the apartment renovations. So, uh, Robert, can you please address Candy's question?
Yeah, sure. Again, I'm sorry to hear that you have such horrible conditions. But let me just state again that with the conversion, the regulations call for a one-year waiting period before you can ask for a transfer. However, if there's an emergency situation that can't be resolved by temporarily moving you to another apartment within Harlem River, we'll have to take a look to see if, if Section 8 one-year rule could be waived. Normally not done that way, but we can certainly take a look at it after the, after the closing.
Thanks so much, Robert. And as Robert indicated, we will be able to temporarily relocate residents as part of the renovation scope. So Ellie, and our team is actually going to be in there doing assessments of the individual units. But Ellie, do you want to speak more specifically to the preliminary inspection that will occur in each apartment to inform the scope?
Sure. I just quickly, the, the three things that you mentioned also in terms of the, you have acoustical tiles, you and all the other tenants at, at Harlem River One, those will be removed. And first, we're going to address the, the leaks that the buildings have from the outside, the outside in. So the roofs are going to be replaced. We have leaky roofs at the property, or, or you have leaky roofs at the property right now. Those will be replaced. You have water infiltrating through the masonry. That's going to be addressed. And then all the people above you have potentially leaks coming from their toilets, from damaged risers. So all of that is going to be addressed and, and replaced or repaired. So, you know, there won't, there won't continue to be water dripping down over your, over your head. As far as the acoustical tiles in the bathroom, those are going to be removed during the course of our renovation in the bathroom and replaced with a, with a new sheet rock ceiling. All of the windows are being replaced. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. It's not just in the living area, in the living room. It's, you know, all the windows that are there, whether it's a cellar window, a window in the stairwell, bathroom, living room, kitchen, all the windows are being replaced. All of the flooring is being replaced throughout the unit, whether, you know, right now you have, I, I think 12 by 12 ECT tile in most of the units. We're going to put on a luxury vinyl, we're going to install a luxury vinyl tile in, in, throughout the apartment, with the exception of the bathroom, which is going to get a new porcelain tile floor. As far as water coming up from the tile, that is, um, that is something that we would definitely pick up on in an apartment inspection. We have to go into, we'd like to go into all of the apartments. We've been in 500 plus to date. We would love to, you know, prior to closing, get into all of the units. We can address all these specific concerns. It's unusual that water is coming up from the floor because most of the units have a cellar underneath them. It could be that, it could be a number of things. So we, we would want to, I mean, if offline, if you, or, or online, rather, if you could chat me quickly your unit, we could schedule an inspection just to, to make sure we understand 100% of, of the condition that's going on in your unit. We could schedule, you know, an inspection at your. We could schedule, you know, an inspection at your, at your convenience.
Uh thank you, Ellie. And can you also please speak to the new um HVAC scope a bit and what that means um for residents?
Right, so at, at Harlem River One specifically, so air conditioners will not be going into the new, into the new windows. Um the air condition, basically you can call it a central air conditioning system, which will be cooling, heating and cooling, will come from uh wall-mounted units in your, in your apartments. This is gonna be in the bedrooms, in the uh, in the common areas, in the kitchen. There'll be uh wall-mounted units providing heating and cooling. Uh I know some people have ACs mounted in the windows, some people don't. Now everyone will have cooling. Um this is gonna be controlled by a thermostat in the apartment. Uh you'll be able to heat and cool your unit to your individual comfort as opposed to um, you know, relying on the, the heat that's being produced for the uh, for all six hundred and ninety-three units at the property. So you will, you will control the, the temperature within certain parameters in your, in your apartment.
Uh thank you, Ellie. Uh there are a couple of uh new hands raised. Um can Jessica uh please unmute?
Greetings, everyone. My neighbor's with me, she has some questions.
Yes, I would like to know with, with the Section Eight, will you have to always fill it out? Or once you're in it or on it, you're on it? Or do you have to keep filling it out every year or how does that go?
Hi, this is Robert from NYCHA Section Eight, great question. So once we convert, um you're no longer public housing, you will be a Section Eight resident. And basically, as with public housing, you are gonna be required to recertify your income and family composition uh every year. At the same time, in Section Eight, uh we do apartment inspections and we take that very seriously. So uh again, we're gonna need access to your apartment to allow the inspection to take place. Uh so as long as you qualify and follow the rules and regulations, yes, every year you will be uh qualified to be the Section Eight resident uh from this program.
So what are the rules and regulations that you have to follow in order to?
Same as public housing, you have to uh recertify your income, allow inspection, uh pay your rent. So nothing different than public housing. So the difference here is that in addition to your share of the rent that you're gonna pay, Section Eight is also gonna pay a subsidy, uh which will be the contract rent. Uh that way, the development gets the funding it needs to maintain the building and properties.
If one should retire, does their rent go down?
It's based on your income, so whether you retired or not, if your income goes up, your share of the rent goes up. If your income goes down, your share of the rent goes down. Works the same in public housing.
So also the air conditioners, they talk about having central. So that means you just gotta ditch what you have already and it's gonna go into the garbage, right? Because they're gonna take it out the windows?
I'm gonna let uh management answer that, that's not a sectioning question.
Um yeah, that's a question for um Doreen or Ellie.
The air condition is belong to you and you will be able to, to keep them. However, they will not be able to go back into the window once you, once the windows are done.
So I will have to deal with your air and your heat, what you're putting in the central. I will no longer need mine.
That is correct.
Will I still be able to obtain my, a washing machine without a problem?
I believe your washing machine is okay.
Um, okay. Cause all of this Section Eight business had me a little iffy about it. I wasn't quite, I didn't, I couldn't quite gravitate towards it. It was kinda making me kinda uneasy. I guess maybe because like this is my first apartment and being, it was done under HUD. So I guess I was just so used to HUD and I even that they had gotten rid of Section Eight. So now that they bringing it back, it just had me a tad bit baffled. You understand?
Yeah, hi, this is Robert from Section Eight. I can assure you that Section Eight is not going anywhere. Uh we've been basically administering the Section Eight program for over forty years. It's actually better funded than public housing. So uh I will say that Section Eight is a proven program. Um I've been part of the Section Eight program, working for NYCHA for thirty years, it's only getting better. And I'm very excited for this, I think you're gonna love not only your renovated apartment, but your options with Section Eight. If you choose to later on, request a transfer voucher, either within the city or outside through the affordability transfer process.
So you will always be able to obtain a voucher without any problem as long as you meet the, the uh rent criteria? And you have to be able to meet how much they're, that you have to pay?
You're always gonna pay thirty percent and as long as you recertify and allow for inspections and pay your rent, you'll be fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
So thank you, thank you so much, Robert. There's another question um related to how much the rent is going to be. But um can you please clarify that there's a tenant, a resident paid portion and also a um subsidy paid portion? And how the subsidy paid portion is used?
Right, so as a public housing resident, you're probably not familiar with the term contract rent. So the way it works with Section Eight is uh we basically have a contract rent where it's the value of the apartment. So for instance, let's just say that your apartment is a thousand dollars, that's the contract rent. Let's say your portion, your thirty percent is two hundred dollars. So if the contract rent is a thousand and your share is two hundred, then Section Eight makes the difference, which is eight hundred dollars, which is the subsidy. So it's the tenant's share, the Section Eight share combined is uh the contract rent and how we pay the developer who's managing the property.
Uh for capital repairs, correct, in order to?
It all goes back into the building and uh again, that's, that's just the basics of the Section Eight program, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Robert. Um another hand raised, uh Deveries, uh Deveries' iPhone, can you please unmute?
Hi, good evening. Um I had a question in regards to uh Gerard M. Taj, he actually wrote in the chat and was talking about repairs. So currently, um there's a lot of stuff in my apartment that needs repairing. I have reached out to NYCHA multiple times. Um I went as far as talking to other people who have made themselves available. And to know avail, nothing in my apartment has changed. Um I have taken steps on my own to go ahead and fix these problems, had to pay out of pocket um because um NYCHA isn't, you know, trying to help with uh fixing these issues that, they, they are major issues because um radiators are broken. I've had ra- uh radiator spewing water, like dirty water. Um and also a pole that's broken, um and plaster falling and things like, things of that nature. Um in, a faucet in my kitchen sink is broken and I've called NYCHA, I've reached out to them. Um and nothing, it's just been nothing over and over again. It's been quite a while and I feel like I call them too often for um them to tell me that I need to put in another ticket on top of the tickets that have already been, been put in over months and months and months. So I just wanted to know, um, you know, I know you guys are looking to make improvements, especially, you know, going forward um after construction and everything. But in the meantime, like what can we do to make living here um somewhat better? Cause it's, it's, it's kinda trifling.
Thank you um so much for your question. Um I'd like um our colleagues from CNC and uh to address sort of the, the day-to-day of the management transition and our responsiveness to um work orders and open tickets. But I think Sam, if you can sort of speak to the holistic change that's gonna happen as a result of the, the conversion and the new team coming in place as well.
Yeah, um so first of all, one of the hardest, one of the things I find the hardest about being on the developer side is that we tell you all these things that we're gonna do and then we say, okay, but you have to wait. And it's heartbreaking, honestly. I mean, we, I would start today if we could, but unfortunately, we're still, you know, a few months away. So, you know, in terms of what can you do as a resident on a day-to-day basis? I, the, the, I, I'm sorry to say that my, the, the main answer I can give is just continue to, to be an advocate for yourself and your community. Um continue calling, actually can, can, continue calling the hotlines. Um and you know, if, if, if you wanna also send us an email at our uh info@harlemriverpreservation, or excuse me, info@harlemriver.org email address, we can also try to um flag the issue with NYCHA. Um but again, it is a, it's hard for, I, 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 I always wish that we could just start, you know, we start. But this, this project is very large, um there's a lot, as you know, um for us to address. And um unfortunately, we can't start construction until, until the end of the summer. Um what, once we do start construction.
Sorry.
Sorry, once, once we do start construction, um we are also going to be taking over property management responsibilities. And at that time, you won't need to wait for your full unit to be renovated, to actually have, have things fixed. Um so we will be able to take care of maintenance and operating issues at that, at that point. Um it's obviously not gonna happen on day one, um it's gonna take a little time. I'm sure there'll be things uh that will need to take some time to fix. Um but uh we will be taking responsibility for that um in general on day one. Uh and then.
Sam, can I jump in for a second?
Yep.
Sorry, um this is Judy, I'm also with Settlement Housing Fund. The only asterisk that I wanted to mention, and this doesn't apply to all units, but this does apply to many of the units, is that starting next month, we'll be doing repairs in units to bring all of the units up to the housing quality standard, standard. Um and so if you are one of those units, um and that applies to all of Harlem River houses, then we will be addressing um things that would make your apartment fail the housing quality standards inspection. And many of the things that we're hearing obviously sound like really big issues um that we'll be needing to do in order to bring, make the apartments ready for the conversion. Um I think we've talked about the housing quality standards repairs on previous town halls. So um apologies if this is confusing or a repeat, but um that's one answer. But we do really want to emphasize that from now until conversion, even though we're going to be doing the housing quality standards repairs, um NYCHA is still the manager. And so if you are having trouble, that you've been calling NYCHA um and haven't been getting a response, um please let us know and we'll do what we can to um, you know, connect the dots. Um we can't promise obviously what NYCHA will do, um but we'll absolutely do our best to help make that connection.
Thank you so much, Judy. Um Doreen, um can you please speak to the, a little bit to the management transition plan? Um and the overall uh change in responsiveness once we take over?
Yeah, um there're gonna be a lot of changes that will take place. One of the things that we really pride ourselves, we pride ourselves in our response to your basic management, not management, but maintenance requests. And we will have a system in place by which you can place your, your request. Our response will be within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We will, we will respond immediately on anything that we consider an emergency. Um I assure you that the response for maintenance and everything that you might require for your apartment and that will help you to improve your quality of life will be done with the assistance of CNC and all of the team that's on here. Especially our, our social service providers, the, the Harlem Preservation Group, Settlement House. I mean, you've got one, excuse the expression, hell of a team that's put together to make this happen for you. I know that in the past, you may have been promised a lot of things and you've come up short. But I guarantee you, we're going to do one hell of a job for you. And we're not going to just brag on it, we're just gonna come to work every day and we're gonna show you that we're gonna do what we said that we're gonna do, what we promised. We're gonna show up every day, we're gonna work hard for you and we're going to really help you turn your home around.
Thank you so much, Doreen, I appreciate that response. I'd also like to add to that, we're gonna have um two onsite supers who will be present and responsive um for any issues that come up. Um there, I would like to actually ask if there are any questions on the translation line at this point? Are there any questions on the Spanish or Mandarin lines?
No questions on the Spanish line, thank you.
No question from Mandarin line, thank you.
Thank you so much. Um there's a, there are a few more hands raised, um Eunice Rosario, can you please unmute?
Yes, good evening. Hello?
Hi, how are you?
I'm blessed. Okay, my question is, I, um I've been receiving contacts, people coming to my house from various agencies, not leaving a name. It's just peopleofharlemriver@gmail.com, they don't have any business cards. They also been having outside meetings, letting us know that what happened in, after um RAG took over Ocean Bay in Far Rock Way, that over eighty families was displaced. And how several banks, oh, some, they were evicted and displaced to regentify the neighborhood. And several banks have been invested in these buildings for the private, um for the privateation of these buildings to raise the rent to market rate and to regentify the neighborhood. So they're letting, they're telling us that this is a big gimmick and that eventually, that we're all going to be out in a matter of time. You know, so I'm just a little curious about these people coming around and having these meetings because I'm a little lost because I just wanna know where I stand. I'm a New York City bus operator and I just would like to know that I'm secure on where I live because I don't know what's going on here. Like, I don't know, I know I'm not eligible for Section Eight, but y'all telling me I am eligible for Section Eight or whatever. So it's a big confusion, confusion to me. And then they saying we need lawyers, but why do we need lawyers? And they saying they're gonna do all these beautiful things for Harlem River. Why, why can't housing do these things if the money is there and the banks are not investing? If there's no banks investing in anything, because they telling us that several banks are investing in this property to privatize the area, you know, to regentify the area and privatize the buildings and move everybody out eventually. That's why the rent is gonna go up, that's why they're gonna give us five years and all of this stuff. So I just would like to break down what happened and like with the families in Far Rock Way, why were they evicted? It was eighty families after the renovation between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. And why are these people coming to our house warning us about the RAGs, you know, the RAG people? And like, we getting a lot of different things. I'm getting mail from, from House Harlem River Preservation and I'm getting stuff from peopleofharlemriver@gmail.com. That's what's at the end of their papers, that you email them, but there's no phone number or anything. But these guys come out and ladies with several other residents telling us that they trying to move us out.
Uh thank you so much for that question. Um I'd like to uh go off over to my colleague Ian uh to further explain and clarify the, the PAC and RAG program and uh benefits of it.
Thanks, thanks so much, Diana. So this is Ian with uh the NYCHA team. Thank you for the question and also thank you for the work you do within our city's transportation system. It's, it's very appreciated and NYCHA just wants to emphasize that as we've kind of continuously tried to share, this, this program keeps you secure. You will remain secure as part of this. Um this is a, you know, sometimes there can be a lot of complex elements of, of this program and how we raise the money and how it comes in. But I think that the big thing that we wanna keep emphasizing is that you're currently a, a tenant who is subsidized with a federal voucher and you will remain a tenant that is subsidized with a. who is subsidized with a federal voucher and you will remain a tenant that is subsidized with a fa- for the federal voucher. So we're switching over from Section Nine to Section Eight, but it remains a program that is funded by HUD. NYCHA remains the administrator of this. It is a twenty-year contract term that automatically renews. So this goes on in perpetuity. There is no five year. If you are a holder of your voucher today, you remain a holder of, of the Section Eight voucher after we convert. We will work with you. Uh, we will also, as part of this, uh, fund kind of independent legal representation. So you can, if you have questions, ask someone who isn't NYCHA um, and, and look outside of that. So I think we, we really wanna, you know, thank you for coming to this meeting and thank you for asking us this question because it's really important that everyone understands that there is no right for any party who's on the other side who's loaning us the funds to make these repairs, to mandate that we raise rents. NYCHA is still the, the owner of the ground and there's actually a strict use agreement that prevents us or anyone involved from ever doing anything but affordable housing on this site. It is a use agreement that is tied to the land and NYCHA will in every single circumstance remain the owner of the land. So there, there will not be displacement as part of this program. There will not be rent increases as part of this program outside of what you would normally see with your Section Nine voucher, where if your income goes up, your share of your income would increase slightly, but never above that thirty percent of household income, so.
Understandable, but when, when y'all also did Ocean Bay Houses, right, in Far Rockaway?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so why was those tenants evicted? Two eighty families, why were they evicted? And, and then the, the number of the, the, um, like the rent went up and everything, like why did that happen over there?
So, so the rent, the rent at Ocean Bay, they didn't go up. It was the, the same process that we have here. Um, the, the details on the evictions that occurred at Ocean Bay actually stem from, if, if you look, um, you know, what we have currently with you is that there's an agreement between NYCHA and every tenant to uh, you pay a certain amount of rent and there are rules and, and regulations around your tenancy. And you know, part of the lease that we sign or that, that you currently, you have signed and that we recertify every year is an agreement between NYCHA and their tenant, both for, for rent payment and for certain, certain behaviors. What, what happened there is that uh, there, there weren't actually, NYCHA hadn't um, tenants who were in bad standing, NYCHA hadn't actually gone and acted on and corrected. And so when we switch over to Section Eight, HUD has certain rules and there was a new manager and they were, as a new manager, required to follow certain rules and they went through and um, there were effectively delayed actions that were really on NYCHA. So what we've done to make sure that that is, is never happening again is much more uh, much more outreach to make sure that tenants who aren't in good standing before the conversion are very aware and much more communication that everyone should make sure that you are in good standing. And uh, after the fact, we're gonna work with the development team to make sure that even in events where tenants who are current tenants aren't in compliant with, aren't in compliance with the rules and regulations of Section Eight, that um, that we can try to work on uh, pathways to make sure every tenant remains in good standing. So, you know, this is still an agreement. There are still obligations of the tenants to pay rent, just like there are under Section Nine. There are still obligations of the tenants to kind of respect and, and maintain their units in a certain condition, just like there are under Section Nine. So, so that's really the source of the evictions that you might have read about at Ocean Bay. But I'd also encourage you to read a little bit about um, what, what the detail, what, what the other details were there. Because this program doesn't, doesn't trigger evictions.
I, I understand, I'm, that's why I'm asking. And another thing I wanted to ask is, so who are these people coming around to our apartments, having these meetings? And telling us that Chase and all these banks are involved in how they reach, try to regentify the area. Like, these people have papers, just like you guys have, with meetings and everything. So I'm getting papers from everybody, like two different sources. You understand what I'm saying? This, this, this came about um, a few mu- like two months ago, after the second meeting.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know, I don't know who, who this, the, the organization is and you know, everyone has a right to, to free speech. Everyone has a right to, to kind of speak to um, their, their opinions. But um, if you do have questions, you can come to NYCHA. You can read our ru- rules and regulations. You can read what we are, what is required of us by the federal government. You can go on the federal government's website. You can go on NYCHA's website. You can come to these meetings. You can learn, I don't know where they're getting their information, but what I can promise you is that we will continue to be here. We'll continue to answer the questions that you have. And um, we are really speaking the truth that you, that you are free to kind of verify um, with, with independent legal counsel about how you will remain in place as a tenant and how there are, um, you know, a, a series of very important tenant protections that you retain as part of this. So if you're getting any misinformation, if you're hearing otherwise, um, come to us, check it. If you don't believe what we're saying, we'll show you the source, we'll show you what we're obligated to do. We'll show you the rule that we're following and that we have to follow it and how it flows from uh, you know, really federal requirements that we get down from, from Congress, so.
And I appreciate it. I just wanted to know just what was going on because I'm just, you know, I'm torn between two. I had to ask my neighbor to help me understand what's going on because I'm getting bits and pieces. Although I, I attend the town hall meetings every time, I just wanted to ask that question because I never asked a question. But now my concern is these people coming around and assuring us that we're, you know, getting a rug pulled from under our feet. They're just so determined, you know, I don't know where they coming from. They're so determined to let us know that we being whacked. So I'm just trying to see what you have to say, because like I'm in the middle, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and I, you know, I, I apologize that there's this confusion and I wanna thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to this program because we really do think that this is a, uh, a, a really unique opportunity to bring meaningful repairs to your development while really keeping you in place as a resident of, of Harlem River. Thank you.
Ian, if I can just chime in very quickly, uh, again, that's one of the reasons why I said, um, you know, it's, it's so important to uh, tell a friend of a friend of a friend that uh, that the websites are there. Uh, we do the door drops and we're making sure that you guys have that information. If we need to put up more postings so that you have the NYCHA sites, the website, the phone number, uh, the, 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 the email and also with the Harlem River Preservation Team, we can dispel a lot of the rumors. I, I've been out there with you uh, when uh, some of those groups have come and uh, it, it does become very confusing, we understand that, but you can get real answers. Uh, you just, you just dial those numbers or shoot us an email or, or uh, look, you, uh, we have plenty of information on the website. Uh, if you want real answers, uh, you can, you definitely contact us and we'll reach out.
And thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking time to answer my call.
And, and, and I just wanna, I just wanna add to that. This is Donald from West Harlem. And I think that the development team that's on this project has a commitment to ensure that nobody's gonna get displaced. NYCHA is gonna enforce it. And, and we just finished working on a project, um, Randolph Houses that closed um, in twenty sixteen seventeen. And we had to get all the tenants in good standards and we did, and zero percent get displaced. So we're committed to make sure that that's not gonna happen on Harlem River. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. I was gonna leave here. Thank you so much.
Ms, Ms. Eunice, not to pile, not to pile on with everyone, I just wanted to respond to one other thing. If, if, you may have said it, it may have been someone else about needing legal counsel. I just wanna be really clear, the, the number, the hotline that we provided for um, the Legal Aid Society is not about needing legal counsel. It's just a resource that NYCHA has been able to provide for residents if they have questions about a lease. Not everyone is ready for a lease and it can be very confusing and scary, especially when there's a lot of changes happening with all of these repairs. So it has, it's, it's not that you need a, need a lawyer, it's that legal, legal, legal advice and help interpreting uh, your, your lease is available to you as a service if you'd like it. You're not obligated to use it at all.
No, indeed, I would like that, yeah. I would definitely like that, just to clarify it and get everything just straight out. Just told to me and playing English without no, you know, me misunderstanding anything.
And, and Ms. Eunice, when we were, I think we said earlier in this meeting, we are going to be distributing at every single household a copy of the lease and in the packet of information on top of it, or I actually think it's the second page, there's a little description of what the lease is and on that page, there's a phone number that's, it says the, the number for the legal hotline. Um, so you'll be receiving that probably within the next two weeks at, at your home.
Okay, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, thank you so much. It looks like we're actually at time, so Sam, I just wanna send it back to you.
Great, thank you, Ayanna, and thank you everyone for the questions. This is, I mean, all of these have been really helpful. We're not gonna stop doing these. They're every four to six weeks. Um, I know there are probably dozens of more questions and, you know, as always, please feel free to email us at info@harlemriver.org. Um, please send us your questions. Please look out for flyers for the next town hall. Um, we really wanna hear from you. We want your feedback and definitely fill out your resident survey um, so that we can have a sense of what, what services you'd like to see in the development. And just as a, to give, to have the final word, I just wanna pass it back over to Donald Notice um, from West Harlem um, to just send, to take us out. Donald?
Okay, good, good evening again, everybody. Um, I think this was an awesome town hall, a lot of information. Harlem River, how, how, Harlem River Houses indeed is an awesome project. Um, we are right now in a unique, unusual and touching season with COVID nineteen um, in front of us and we can see a dim light at the end of the tunnel. So we're excited about this um, project. We've been excited a long time. I think we put a decent and awesome um, development team together to make sure that we, you know, deliver this affordable housing project. We're transforming a vision that NYCHA had with these um, PAC deals and that vision fits into the vision of the Affordable Housing Agenda that Settlement Housing and West Harlem has. And we've also included the vision of the tenants and the residents at Harlem River to ensure that this decent and affordable housing is created. There is a commitment on this historic site. There is the human capital that we're gonna invest in and make sure that we create permanent and construction jobs on the site and we're gonna develop a lot of programs. And programs is the key to, you know, redeveloping and um, getting, getting, getting the tenants involved in, 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 in the, in the work that's going on here. Um, at the Randolph Houses site, we, we just had a program that we ended um, yesterday with um, creative arts. And it was awesome to see the parents involved with the program and the students involved with the program. And the outcome was, you know, just awesome that they have amazing um, residents living in NYCHA and we can nurture that. Um, I just wanna give a, you know, I wanna say that this is an awesome, awesome development team, but I'm gonna quote the, the Doreen and say this is one hell of a development team. Settlement Housing, WAGA, CNC, LMN, PSS, and NYCHA. We will make sure that these houses are built and at the end of the day, when it's over, you will see what we're talking about. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening. Be safe.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.